Okay, I'd like to officially call the meeting to order of the Otter Valley Unified Union School District at 6:36 PM. The legal voters of the Otter Valley Unified Union School District comprising the voters of the town of Brandon, Goshen, Lester, Pittsburgh, Sudbury, and Whiting are hereby notified and warned to meet at the Otter Valley Union High School in the auditorium. Virtual option available to listen and watch only with no authority to vote from the floor on March 1st at 6:36 PM. To conduct the following business. Article 1, to elect the following officers to serve from their election and qualification until the next annual district meeting following the election and qualification of their successors. We'll start with the position of moderator. Are there any nominations?
Nominate Doug Bailey.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of voting in Doug Bailey for the position of moderator, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Doug Bailey is the moderator.
It's always easy to win when there's election of one. Next order of business is to have a clerk. Are there any nominations for clerk?
I nominate Charlene Bryant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for Charlene Bryant. Any other nominations? None heard? All those in favor of Charlene Bryant as clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Charlene Bryant is the clerk. Now for the position of treasurer. Do we have nominations for treasurer?
I nominate Bill Dick or William Dick.
Second.
We have a nomination and a second for Bill Dick. Any other nominations? None heard? All in favor of Bill Dick for treasurer, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill Dick is the treasurer again. Article 2, to approve the minutes from the Unified Union District meeting held on February 23rd, 2022 and April 25th, 2022.
So moved to approve.
Need a motion from Sue Gates to approve? Second.
Second.
We have a second. Any discussion? None heard? All those in favor of approving the minutes for the district meetings, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. I hear the phone. Article 3, to hear the Board of School Directors of the Unified Union District present its estimate of expenditures for the incoming year.
Oh, yep, we can do that. Sorry, we're gonna, we're gonna have Brenda Fleming come up and go through the presentation. Yes.
Can I see the picture?
Sure. Okay.
Feel badly with my back, you guys. So first we just talk about what kind of drives the budget decisions. We take a look at the Rutland Northeast mission and vision as well as the Otter Valley Unified Union's policy, the Rutland Northeast goals, and we always pay attention to the equity of opportunity for student achievement and looking for ways to be efficient in our delivery and capitalize on our merger. So the Rutland Northeast vision, I don't know if you want me to read this or not, but the vision and mission are there, and the Otter Valley's end policy is also there for your reading. They are also included online on the website. And then supervisory goals, we have three goals. One, continuously improve instructional practices to meet the need of all students, provide systematic academic and emotional interventions and supports for improved student achievement, and literacy will be taught across the curriculum pre-K through 12 with the foundation of all students reading on grade level by the end of grade two. A little bit about the budget timeline, how we start and how we finish. So in October and November, the board begins to review the financial monitoring reports. They set their governance budget parameters and discussions, and we talk about negotiation, salaries, benefits, parameters. Then in early December, the Otter Valley Board receives an initial budget after the administration has met with each principal and looked sight by sight at all of our needs, programs, and evaluating all of the same. Then in early January, the Otter Valley Board meets again to review and adopt the final budget after all of the final numbers are in from the state, and we can accurately predict an education property tax rate. Sometimes there's necessary to hold a mid-January special meeting depending on whether the state information is timely or not. This year we didn't happen to have one, but that's the first one in five or six years when we've been able to receive information from the state on time. So one of the most important things we do is kind of pay attention to our class sizes and our class size policy. So we have a policy that outlines what our minimum class sizes are, what our optimal class sizes are, and what our maximum class sizes are by grade range, and we kind of watch what enrollments are based on what we know and who is enrolled as of October 1st of the current year, and then we project what next year would be. So without going over each of the line items, you know, we kind of look down to that bottom right-hand corner. Overall, the Lothrup teachers are looking at a class size ratios of about 1 to 15. We did and have seen some reductions, but we're starting to creep back up a little bit, but with our class sizes, we have reduced one classroom teacher, and we are monitoring the class, the third grade class, and whether that position might stay as a classroom teacher or might be used as intervention and other support services. In Lothrup, I'm sorry, Nashabye, we are seeing, this school is seeing rising in moments. We projected in fiscal year '23 that we would be looking at about 364 kids, and for fiscal year '24, we're expecting 384. So we are increasing at that school, the one small class, plus the fifth grade, 42, but every other one is pushing the high ends of our class size ratios. We have added additional library support and one additional para educator to meet student needs. Otter Creek Academy, our smallest school, that enrollments are pretty much level. This is our only school with multi-age. We are projecting that they too, like Lothrup, are looking at an overall teacher ratio of 1 to 15 with a multi-age class in grades 2 and 3 and 5 and 6. When we have multi-age, we still teach math at grade level, and that's included incorporated into the budget. There were no program changes or staffing changes that we see. And Otter Valley, obviously our biggest school, we did see a decline from what we projected to what actually, to what we actually have for students, and we're expecting that they are essentially going up maybe about six students overall throughout 7 through 12, with the high school being about four different, I'm sorry, the middle school being about four different and the high school being about two different. We did find a decline of 37 fewer students, and we know that's predominantly from dropout. And I think a lot of it has to do with kind of capturing those students that we lost during the pandemic and kind of chewing that up. We have made a change to the dean of students position to a licensed position, so that change was actually made this September, but when you look budget to budget in the previous year, it was a support position. This year it is a licensed position. We are adding one hopefully dual-licensed ELS or, and social studies teacher. I think that should be ELA, English Language Arts, and one intervention specialist para Just a reminder that we do run some after-school programs in all of our elementary schools, and we have supported that with fees paid by parents as well as subsidy collected by the Department of Children and Family Services and from the board. And so we do have a reserve fund, the After-School and Summer Programming Fund, and this is just kind of giving you a little snapshot of its health. You know, we're projecting that the end of this fiscal year, after we run our year-round programs, that we'd be about $385,000. So what does that all mean? So the proposed budget is $24,174,395, which is an increase of 1.4 million or 6.46%. The major budget changes or drivers is again Lothrup reducing one, class size to one full-time classroom teacher, Nashabye adding one full-time para educator, Nashabye also adding 10 hours a week of support services for the library. OCA is shifting some costs for extraordinary students. An extraordinary student is a student who doesn't meet the definition of special education but their educational cost exceeds $65,000. So under Act 173, the boards made the decision to change or to update our assessment model and include those students, those extraordinary non-IEP students, in the special services budget for continuity, for control, and for supervision of their placements. So that was a cost shift out of this budget and into the supervisory union budget. Otter Valley Union Middle High School is, again, this time I have it right, adding one FTE. We're hoping for a dual certification in English Language Arts and Social Studies. We are also adding one para educator and intervention specialist to meet our students' needs, and we're adding a pre-late run, so a run between the after-school run and the late run to accommodate students who might need some academic support in between and may not be here as late as sports and the late ones. There is also a cost shift from the Otter Valley Middle and High School budget for an extraordinary student into the Rutland Northeast. And then we put in $100,000 to support the district-wide services that we need in regards to truancy, social work, school safety. And the position is still being fleshed out and defined, so it was a placeholder for that amount to service all of the schools. And then Otter Valley Unified Union, of course, includes the assessments from Rutland Northeast, and your share of Rutland Northeast assessments increased by 12%. That has to do with the assessment increases on a whole as well as the shifting in the pie between how many kids are Barstow students and how many kids are Otter Valley students. And it does include a 2.39% increase for the shipping of the extraordinary students out of OCA and Otter Valley into Rutland Northeast. So the budget continues to maintain smaller primary class sizes to continue our focus on primary literacy instruction. It also includes salaries and benefits according to the board's directives as well as negotiated contracts, and we take a look line by line for adjustments of utilities, supplies, and non-program related costs based on things we know and history. So again, the budget, the pie chart just kind of looks at it in a different way. This is the same $24 million budget, but where do we spend our funds? And so we spend approximately 84% of our funds in direct instruction or directly impacting students, and that includes direct instruction, which is classroom instruction, unified arts, arts and special education, foreign language, PE, all of those, student support, which is nurse guidance and behavioral supports, instructional staff support, which is library media. Obviously, our facilities are here and designed for education, and transportation to bring students to and from school. So 85% of our funds go direct to the students' programs and services. And so sometimes the question is, okay, of the 1.4 million dollars, where is the increase? What percentage is going to each department? And so this graph just kind of tells you that direct instruction is the biggest piece of that. Of the 6.46%, we're seeing 3.13 invested in direct instruction, another 1.03 in student support, and 1% in facilities. This is just another way to look at the budget. So instead of the department, sort of where are we spending our money? This is kind of what are we buying with our funds? And so this is salaries, benefits across all departments. And this gives you a snapshot of what we spent in fiscal year '22, what our current budget is and what our proposed budget, and it graphically illustrates that where we are spending our funds are on our people in salaries and benefits. You can see that those are steadily increasing. When you look at the assessment tuition and communication section, you can also see that that's increasing, and that's because assessments are to the supervisory union, which is predominantly employees in the supervisory union for special education, transportation, and the central office. Supplies, utilities, vehicles, debt service, they're all fairly flat. And then another way to kind of look at the budget is site by site, and this is where we really spend a lot of time trying to be considerate and equitable as we're looking at student services. So I'm gonna start with our smallest school, OCA, is 6% of our budget, and our small school's about 70 to 80 students. Lothrup, which is almost exactly double, about 165 to 190 students when you count pre-K, is 12% of the budget. And then Nashabye is double, Lothrup, at about 400 students, and it hits 20% of the budget. And then the high school picks up the other 40% of the budget. The district-wide costs of 22% equally affect all of the sites because that includes transportation to and from school, special education, the new students that we just talked about, the extraordinary students, as well as the central office cost. So what does it all mean in regards to a tax rate and how do we go from $24 million to what it means to taxpayers? So the premise of Act 60 or the bring-in decision is that your town doesn't fund just your spending. So the same spending in any town will have the same tax rate, and how that is captured or how that is calculated is with this magic thing called a yield. And the tax commissioner announces a yield December 1st every year by statute according to a calculation by statute that considers economic impacts around the state, considers current state revenues, considers common level of appraisal and home sales, and estimates what education spending throughout the state might be. The tax commissioner announced a yield of $15,479. This is year two of an unprecedented increase in the yield, and because it is a formula, it is directly linked to the increase we are seeing in consumer price index, the increase we are seeing in inflation. What that means is the first $15,479 we spend per pupil will give us a dollar tax rate, and every percentage we spend over that will increase our tax rate. So we have to take our total budget of $24 million and convert it into a per-pupil spending. So the $24 million, you subtract from that the things that we do not need to collect at the state level or the things that we do not need to collect in taxes, and for us that's $734,000. That includes money for surplus one balance, and you'll remember that we carried over $260,000 for that. That includes tuition monies from Barstow for students who attend Otter Valley. That includes the Burtet Fund money to pay for the debt service related to their 2015 biomass project as well as education reimbursement money for vocational student transportation and drivers' aid. So the net education spending amount is $23,441,96. That's where we can control, that's the last number on this page that we get to control as we build the budget. The next number is the number of equalized pupils. Equalized pupils is a formula that weights students based on their services. So preschool students are counted as 40% of unequalized pupils because they attend school 10 hours a week. K through 6 students are counted as 1, and 7 through 12 are counted as 113 because the cost to educate a student in the high school, 7 through 12, with requirements for discipline, licensures, and multiple pathways to graduation is higher than educating an elementary student. It is an average over two years. There's additional money added for poverty and English as a second language. So our number has decreased about 16.82 from last year. It doesn't surprise me because we saw that dropout rate if you remember back on the slide with Otter Valley. So we have 1,258 equalized pupils. Simple division, the $23 million divided by the 1,258 gives us an education spending for equalized pupil of $18,629. That number again is what's going to be used with the yield to set the tax rate. So the $18,629 will yield a tax rate of $1.20, maybe $1.21 depending on how that four rounds out, if it does round out. And last year we were at $1.27. So that's the unified rate that is equal throughout the state, I'm sorry, throughout the district until we adjust it for common level of appraisal, which I'll talk about in a minute, but I want to just focus a little bit on the last column. When the tax commissioner announces the yield, they also give us information on what they are projecting education spending for equalized pupils to be and how much they expect it to raise from last year. So in that projection, they were projecting on average throughout the state of Vermont, the education spending for equalized pupil would be $20,155. Our spending is $18,629. So we do spend significantly below the state average. They are estimating that people's district spending will go up 9.7, and we did approach that at 9.5%. Again, all that information is used in determining the yield, the $15,479, which is up more than $2,000 from last year. And so what that means is last year, $1.00 tax rate raised $13,314 per student. That same dollar in this budget raises $15,479. So while the education spending for equalized pupil has increased 9.5%, because the yield anticipated that, the amount of our unified tax rate is actually going down 5.81%. It's important to note, thank you, it's important to note that the yield will be set by the legislature. At this point, this is the most up-to-date information we have. There hasn't been any discussion on what the yield or where the yield will land, but it is always set by the legislature, most often in the Budget Appropriations Bill. So one of the last acts that they do before adjournment. So what does the tax rate mean when you go from the $1.20 Otter Valley Unified Tax Rate to each of our towns? Common level of appraisal. So this is that double-edged sword that gives and takes. So the common level of appraisal is a formula that determines what our properties are selling for in real bona fide sales versus what they're listed for on grant lists. And with COVID, we've all seen houses go on the market and come off the market very, very quickly, and selling prices exceeding asking prices or in bidding wars. That's great if you're selling. That's great when you're thinking of your property value if you're reappraising and you're getting the benefit of that, but what it also means is because grant lists can't keep up with that inflation and that market change, they're behind. And so if the grant list goes down or their CLA is below 100%, what that means is a property is selling for, I'll use Brandon, so Brandon's CLA is at 84%, and so that means that a $84,000 house is selling for $100,000. So it's about 15% below what it's actually selling for. The state can't change our $1.20, or they can't change our grant list, so they can't change our household values, so instead they change our tax rate. So in Brandon, they, last year had a CLA of 93, they dropped about nine points to 84, and that means that the $1.20 tax rate, unified tax rate, has to be increased by that 15, almost 16% to $1.43. So without going through each of them, you can see that we are seeing increases after CLA between 2 cents and 15 cents. The two towns at 15 cents are both Lester and Pittsburgh, and both those towns have filed for an appeal to their common level of appraisal. So their select board believes that there are properties that are considered in the calculation that should be excluded, and they are appealing now. That will be settled and reevaluated, and those numbers will change automatically depending on how that comes out. That's it.
Brenda? Back to you in the booth.
Yes, thank you very much, Brenda. Question?
I got one.
Sue?
So you were talking about the fund that funds the land down in Lothrup, we have something like that in Brandon, Brandon, Nashabye, there's a fund that's funding.
The Uli Fund, yes.
Yeah. Okay, I know that fund, but I just wanted to clarify.
Any additional questions? Governor, we will move on to Article 4, to approve the following compensation of the Unified Union District officers. The school directors, $1,500 per member per year with an additional $750 for the member serving as the school board chair. Moderator, $150 per meeting. Clerk, $150 per meeting. And treasurer, $6,000 per year. Can we get a motion to approve? Motion from Sue. All, second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Brenda? No, Charlene was asking, we got it, we're good.
Article 5, to authorize the Unified Union District to borrow money pending the receipt of payments from the State Education Fund or the Town Tax Funds by the issuance of its notes or orders payable not later than one year from the date, provided however that the Unified Union District is authorized by the Vermont statutes to borrow sufficient funds to meet pending obligations. And we have a motion to pay, to allow them to borrow money. Sue Gates?
Second.
Second. All in favor of allowing the school board to borrow money if needed, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard. Article 6, to transact any other school business thought proper when met. Is there any other business to meet?
I just want to say thank you, all of you guys. I know you have a hard job, and thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you from Sue. Any other comments? None heard. The meeting shall be recessed till Tuesday, March 7th for the purpose of voting the following articles at the usual polling place in the member district by Australian ballot. Set ballot being brought to the Brandon American Legion Post 55 following the close of the polls in the member districts where they will be co-mingled and counted by the Board of Civil Authority of the constituent districts. The polling places are as follows. Brandon will be 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Brandon American Legion Post 55. Town Goshen, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Goshen Town Hall. Town Goshen, 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Goshen Town Hall. Town of Lester, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Lester Town Office. Pittsburgh, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Pittsburgh Town Office. Sudbury, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Sudbury Town Hall. And the town of Whiting, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Whiting Town Hall. Article seven, which will be voted that day, is to elect the following officers to serve as their elected qualifications until March following the election and the qualification of their successors. A, school director from Brandon for the term of three years. B, school director, Goshen, the term of one year, which is remaining from a three-year term. C, school director, Lester, for a term of three years. School director in Pittsburgh, term of two years remaining on a three-year term. School director-at-large for a term of three years, and a second school director-at-large for a term of three years. Article eight, shall the voters of the school district approve the school board expenditure $24,174,395, which is the amount the school board has determined to be necessary for the ensuing physical year. It is estimated that this proposed budget, if approved, will be the result in educational spending of $18,629 per equalized pupil. This project, projected spending per equalized pupil is 9.5% higher than the spending in the current year. That is the end of the meeting, and we are in recess until March 7th.